I'm sorry, the Governor is going to have another press conference this afternoon at 2:30. We did get an email about an hour ago, and there are now 56 additional positive cases in Iowa, which she will be covering in her press conference this afternoon. For today, for Dubuque County, let's see here, we have had two additional cases. So we are now at eight positive. For the total entire state of Iowa, it looks to be 46 counties that at least have one positive case. A total for the state of Iowa for positive, there's 235. For negative in the state of Iowa, there are 3,740. And unfortunately, we've had two additional deaths in the state of Iowa, for a total of three deaths in the state of Iowa. I did look at Wisconsin as well, and they have a total of 707 positive. Negative tests, they've had 11,583, and the state of Wisconsin has had eight deaths. Illinois, they have had a positive of 2,538. Illinois has had 14,093 negative tests. And for the state of Illinois, they have had 26 deaths. So just a couple of things that I would like to share with you is that with the VNA call center, on Wednesday at the end of the day, we had tracked 80 calls for the county residents that called in. And yesterday at the end of the day, we've had 60 calls. We also worked on since Wednesday, we do have liaisons in place for our long-term care and our immigrant population. We had talked about those on Wednesday. So those, we did address, and we feel as though we have good plans in place. And again, I should have started off by just saying, with our Public Health Emergency Management Incident Team, we still work very, very closely, I mean, our Dubuque County Public Health Incident Management Team consists of Tom Berger, Stacy Killian, Mary Rose, and myself. And we do meet on a daily basis, and we do talk to the Iowa Department of Public Health as well on a daily basis. So I did want to share that with you, that we are a cohesive group. And even since Wednesday, we have tackled some of those situations, and we feel as though with our liaisons in place, we do have good plans. Just a couple of other items.
Patrice, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure, sure.
You mentioned the VNA call center line. We have numerous people and the press here. Can you give us that number, and then I'll ask my other questions. You can respond to all of them. And then you said there's a long-term care liaison and an immigrant community liaison. Could you please identify those?
Actually, I can start with the VNA. Our number to call for the VNA is 563-556-6200. And the hours are 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And we're looking at adding additional hours during the weekends, but we have not put that in place as of yet. And then with our liaisons that we have in place, we have decided that we are not going to identify those people, that the Incident Command Management Team do know who those people are. So if a situation would occur, and if we got the call, we could contact them. But both plans, we feel, are well-established with the groups that need to be in communication and collaboration with that liaison person. We don't want to bombard our liaison people with additional calls that might come in. So Dave, at this time, we've decided not to identify those two people. But we do have them in place.
So if one of our long-term care facilities has a concern, a question, who do they contact if we're not saying who the liaison is?
They know, I'm sorry, they know who the liaison person is, but we're not publicly announcing it. And in fact, the long-term care population has already had a Zoom meeting with that liaison.
Okay.
And if we, uh-huh, sure. Okay?
So my question about the, Patrice, my question following up on the liaison is that you indicated there was like a committee. Are you confirming that there's a person? And then also, what reporting does that person have directly to you as compared to through the hospital chain?
Okay, with the liaison person, that would be Tom, Mary Rose, Stacy, and my contact. That we would go to that person directly. And yes, there is a committee formed with different agencies that that liaison is then communicating to those agencies and committees that are all part of the immigrant program itself. So that, and I'm sorry, Anne, I just lost, what was your second part of the question?
The question is, I understand that you have a way to get information out to them. How does someone with a concern at the long-term care facility or in a population supportive of immigrants perhaps, how do they get back to you?
Through the liaison. And I will be honest, that we have been getting individual emails, which is perfectly fine. We don't mind that at all. But we would rather have them work with their coalition that is formed with this liaison person and for us to communicate to that liaison person. So let's say even if the hospital were to call us on a situation that dealt with either of those populations, then we would refer them onto that liaison person, and that liaison person would handle that situation. And that's how it is now. And I'll be quite honest, with all of everything that we have been dealing with, this is such a rapidly changing event for us, that it might be totally different tomorrow. So what I'm reporting on today is how we have it today.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, and just a couple of other situations that we're just really trying to stress to the public is basically limiting that traffic to our local healthcare providers through the clinics and hospitals. We're just, again, encouraging people to please call. Because with modern technology, a lot of the assessments can be done over the telephone instead of that person actually driving to that site. And did everyone see the Governor's new recommendations yesterday regarding the medical and dental service, nine essentials? And then extending the orders up to April 7th for the restaurants and bars, fitness centers, swimming pools, salons, medical spas, barber shops, tattoo establishments, massage therapy establishments, theaters, casinos, gaming events, senior citizen and adult daycare facilities, mask gatherings. That has all been extended now to April 7th. And then yesterday, it was added with the same expansion up to April 7th or through April 7th will be the bookstores, the closure of bookstores, clothing stores, shoe stores, jewelry stores, luggage stores, cosmetic beauty or perfume stores, florists and furniture and home furnishing stores. And all of that information is on the Governor's website for the state of Iowa as well. And that is all that I have for today.
I would have a question for you, Patrice.
Sure.
This concerns who is the liaison and the oversight to the clinics? You talk a lot about the hospitals. But I want to know, who is assuring the community that CDC standards are being implemented and observed at the health clinics? The individual, the privately owned, the community? Who is the person overseeing that?
Currently, Anne, right now, it's basically Mary Rose, Stacy, and myself. And we are working on fine-tuning that plan. And hopefully by next week, I will have a better answer for you.
So we don't know then specifically how these operations are complying with the requests from the Governor and from the government, from the federal government even?
We do have with the hospitals, we do have Tilly Formalt, who is also part of this team at Mercy. And Karen Bassin is part of this team from Unity Point. And with their satellite operations, they're our go-to people for that. But we will, we just, we need to fine-tune our plan, and we will.
Well, you probably need a whole nother liaison person because you've left out significant portions of the medical care providers. What's Medical Associates doing, Grand River Center? You know, when we get to the hospitals, I understand that we have people directly there. But you know, as I wrote to you privately this morning, I have some significant concerns, but there's no oversight as to what the individual clinics are doing, whether they're following protocol.
And Anne, I will tell you that with our Incident Command Conference Call today, we did talk about this, and we will continue to work on that. So thank you for that email this morning. We are moving forward.
Patrice, I have a concern that has been expressed to me from employees. And I understand that Mayor Mule has been getting calls as well. And it deals with employees working in factory settings that are, you know, are still open for business. Some are essential, some may not be. But, and concerns about working shoulder to shoulder, that type of thing. Now, are there, is there a place that this could be reported? You know, they're apparently either don't want to talk to their employer, don't want to make waves or whatever, so they're calling elected officials. Who do we talk to other than contacting the employers and their representatives if that's, you know, if that's part of the equation?
I know that we did have one situation that I'm aware of, that someone did call the call number, our 556-6200, and one of the nurses did make contact to that place of employment. So I would probably still, if, you know, if people weren't comfortable talking to their supervisor at work, I would suggest that they call that call-in number.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Questions for Patrice from Supervisor Wickham or McDonough?
Sounds like we need to expand those hours at the call center. If that's where we're going to be directing people to, is the 556-6200 number, we probably need to be there over the weekend as compared to, you know, someone who's working a job where they're shoulder to shoulder, 8:00 to 6:00 is probably not adequate.
Sure, and I'll follow up then with that, Anne.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. And I concur and agree with Supervisor McDonough. You know, there's people working Saturdays, Sundays, second shift, third shift. 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to me, doesn't, isn't going to cut it.
Sure, I'll follow up.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for Patrice?
Supervisor Wickham, do you have a question?
Oh, not at this time. I think I'm okay.
All right, bring Tom Berger on then, please. Tom, can you unmute yourself?
I couldn't, but I'm on now. You should be able to hear me, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Just an update as far as the supplies go. We did receive three supplies or shipments from the state this week. So we're out delivering, we delivered all morning to healthcare facilities and still currently doing so. We're on another run right now. We've been picking up masks. We've had a lot of donations for the N95 since it showed up in the paper and what was sent out for the businesses. So we're doing a lot better than we were last week as far as having the masks available. I don't think we're going through a lot in the community right now, at least the N95 masks. But we did get a shipment of the surgical mask, so we're getting them out to the healthcare facilities, EMS, and everybody that has the direct patient contact.
Tom, Supervisor Wickham, can you share, if you don't have the numbers today, but can you share with us what that, those inventory counts? What were the items and then the number at a later date, if you don't have them in front of you?
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me. I know, like McGraw-Hill for sure, they had some masks, and we got almost over 5,000 from them alone.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, and NICC did drop us off some last week, almost 2,000 masks that they were able to get through Nikas and Daninen. So really good turnout there, plus all the other ones that we've been picking up around the community. So I would, we got quite a few of them out, but we still probably have over 5,000 here. But you know, the usage for the N95s hasn't spiked like, you know, we anticipate it will once we get more hospitalized cases and such, so, if that makes sense. So on the other, we did get some isolation gowns in. They were hard to come by. And we're getting them out as well. So I'm thinking, you know, IDPH and Homeland Security is allowing us, you know, they're kind of looking four to seven days in advance, making sure nobody stockpiles and hordes the equipment. And so it's getting out to where it needs to go. So that's been happening. So we're getting the supplies in, and we're getting them out the door, getting them to the people that need them.
It would be helpful to me if you could break out some numbers that show, I mean, the community's been very responsive, but then we might be at the extent of what the community response can be. So it would be still good as a, to know what the response is from the government. Because eventually, you know, we're asking for private supplies because we don't have enough coming from the state and from the federal government. So you know, I like the numbers from the individuals, but we still need to certainly keep our pulse on what we need from government supplies as well, from the Iowa folks.
Right, we can provide that number. But like I said, the weekly usage isn't real high as of yet. So, but we're, we are sitting a lot better than we were last week, so that's good.
So how do we look for ventilators? And also the capacity of beds at the hospital at this time?
I do not have the hospital information, so I don't know if that's, I don't know if Patrice has that availability, or that's something we can probably, I wouldn't know anyway.
I would like to start knowing that. I mean, if we are going to see numbers increase, then we will want to know what the hospital bed numbers are. And then also, where are we with ventilators? Just to, you know, let the community know at large, and certainly for myself, what do we have for ventilators and what is our plan to get more of those? And you know, I know that there's been a call made and offers made from our nursing, higher education folks to donate hospital beds from their clinics to the hospitals. So some-
Those conversations must be going on direct with the hospitals at this point, because I have not heard anything on that.
And actually-
That's something we can follow up with at our Monday call when we have our reps from Mercy and family on there too.
And this is Patrice. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We had a webinar with IDPH on Wednesday that we had- we were at the Board of Supervisors meeting. But actually, I went back right after and I did review that webinar from IDPH. They are working on the ventilators, the beds, the staffing. With the local, with the state hospitals right now, they said that they hope to have a better tracking system completed before next week. And I know that Rebecca Curtis, who's at the Iowa Department of Public Health, is in charge of that program, as well as getting the numbers out. I know through the Iowa Board of Nursing that they were working together to bring in retired nurses that wish to volunteer to help with, you know, our event right now, as well as other professionals. So I know on Wednesday, IDPH is trying to gather all of that information. So as soon, if it's released to us, and I will ask if it's not released to us, what those numbers are, and I can present those as soon as they're available to us.
Okay, Tom, Dave Baker, and my hat's off to you. I think you've coordinated the hand sanitizer thing, and you want to give an update on that? It looks like we're, at least for the short term, we're in pretty good shape. Is that correct? Did we lose Tom?
Tom, do you copy?
Okay, I got muted again.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Okay, yeah, a couple of good things on that end. We did hear that the state is working with the Department of Corrections to start making some there that will be distributed. I don't foresee seeing that in the near future. I did talk to one healthcare facility this morning that I checked up on with some other supplies and asked about hand sanitizer. And they said they just received a shipment yesterday from-
Sorry about that.
They just received a shipment yesterday from their normal supply chain. So hopefully the supply chain is checking up with that. And then we're also working with that individual, you know, that we talked about at the other meeting to get us 500 of the bottles and like a thousand of the smaller size. And that will cover what the healthcare centers, EMS, and everybody has. It sounds like they have a small supply, everybody, you know, it's just that it's not, once what they have out in inventory, most of them, you know, that's not all of them, but most of them, what they have out on their rigs is, that's what they have left. So they don't have any, very little supply left. So hopefully by, over the weekend, early next week, we'll have that worked through and have some locally that we can get out.
So Tom, we are making sure that we don't wait, we're not going to run out and then have to scramble. You're, I think each day you've been working on locating sources. And we just want to make sure that our providers have what they need and that we're not in a shortage situation.
Right. Well, and hand sanitizer is only supposed to be used if you can't wash your hands. So like for EMS, they're going to take their gloves off at the hospital. They're going to wash their hands there. So I mean, obviously, it's an important thing, but it's the second in line. Washing your hands for 20 seconds with warm soapy water is by far the best thing they can do. So, but yeah, we want to definitely get it, and I think we're on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
Just that, yeah, our contact got a little busy the last couple of days, so we'll get one call in time.
I heard. Okay, any other questions for Tom?
The only other thing, we're working towards full EOC activation and what that'll mean, since it's a virtual. Towards the end of the week, we will get out and do another Zoom webinar with all the small communities and any of our EOC partners, kind of a question and answer. I will be sending out to all the department heads an ICS form that we've been using to, for them to reply back what their situation status is now, any resource requests where we're at. We'll get that, we'll compile it, and then shoot that out to all the communities as a kind of a countywide overview, just to share that information. And everybody will know what requests are coming in from this. The smaller cities, I haven't had a whole lot of requests, you know, a few questions here and there. But this will kind of, that's how we, since it's, we can't get everybody in the room, which we've been preaching for 20 years on how you run an emergency operations center. Everybody, we want everybody present, and this is exact opposite. So we're learning and adapting, and I got to, thanks for the, you know, the Zoom, the equipment that we have, you know, that Nathan got for us, did a wonderful job. And Sheriff Kennedy is also helping us out with a vehicle. So everybody, all the other department heads have reached out to me, I think, in making sure we're doing good and offering their assistance what they can do. So I appreciate that.
It's two things. We have a note on our group chat that's asking, and it's probably both of these maybe for Patrice. But the name of the individual on the response team who's working with long-term care facilities, are we, again, you were just back to your hearing, you know, of the three of you, or four of you, or five or whatever, who is charged with making sure that there's frequent contact with long-term care?
Well, I am, oh, go ahead, Patrice.
Okay, one thing, if it's an outside person, they could actually call the call-in number to share whatever their concern is. And then that nurse who's taking that call could contact that person. Or if they wanted to send any of us, the four of us, an email, we would make sure that it got there.
So all four of you would share that responsibility? This question is actually from State Representative Chuck Eisenhardt.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And then I have a question that will probably take us a little further ahead, hopefully, I mean, much further down the road. But anticipating, and this is inside a medical community, that we can't expect that our beds will remain empty as other communities start to crash and overload, that some of those individuals will be required to be in our facilities with our ventilators. And I hate to use the word "our" and "their", but I want to know if there's discussion at the state level and if there's discussion among our response team about requests for transfers of individuals to our limited hospital beds and ventilators.
Again, Karen and Tilly would be the most appropriate person to answer that question at this time. But, and again, on our webinar on Wednesday, I know that they are looking into all of that. That's all I can say right now.
Okay, I'll keep asking. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Tom Berger?
No, sir.
Thanks, Tom. Anne, anything else for Tom?
Nope, great.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Patrice, I did have one other question, if you don't mind. And it kind of, I guess goes along the lines, I know that because of HIPAA, there's a lot of information is not being released to the public. But again, this was brought to my attention as an elected official. So if there's a, you know, I guess somebody is off work, under quarantine, what are the rights of the employees who are still there as to whether or not they've been exposed? I think it's a fair question.
If a person is under quarantine, that person is being followed by our communicable disease nurses at VNA. All of the state of Iowa has a questionnaire and an assessment process that they then know who, when they interview the person who is in quarantine, who the close contacts are. And if anyone, as far as those close contacts are to be notified, it goes through that communicable disease nurse who is assigned to that case.
Okay, but my question was, what about the employees who may have worked close in practice? close in proximity of the, of that employee? What rights do they have?
And that's what I was sharing, Dave, I'm sorry, that when that communicable disease nurse opens up the case for the person who is positive, she talks with that individual, and it covers everything. You know, where do they work? It's a whole list of questions that they ask the person who is quarantined. Then if they find out that they were at work and became ill, for example, and went home, then that communicable disease nurse will contact those appropriate people. If that person says that they worked an eight-hour shift or a 10-hour shift, and they were standing next to X individual, Y individual, then that communicable disease nurse will follow through with those close contacts as well.
So maybe falls back to advising them to call the VNA call center number if they have questions on that?
Sure, if they weren't, okay, I see what you're saying. If they weren't contacted by that communicable disease nurse, but they had heard that a person was being quarantined, absolutely, they can call that call, the 5566200 number, yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the reality of this, Patrice, is when somebody disappears off a line, you know, it's word spreads even though there may not be a press conference. So other employees are worried about whether they're going to be taking this home to their children, grandchildren, friends, whatever. I know they're supposed to be isolating at home, but, you know, there's still, there might be older people at home, babies at home, people are concerned. And, you know, they want to know what rights do they have to know if they've potentially been exposed?
Correct. I understand what you're saying, yep. But we do have, the communicable disease nurse will contact those people that need to be contacted. And if someone feels as though they should have been contacted because they know of a case, it would probably be the easiest to have them call the call center.
Okay, thank you.
One last question then. Patrice, I just got a text message. Question is, is there a plan for remote sites for the hospitals?
Yes. Tim Link is actually the person who is working on that with a group. Tom, do you know, have you heard any updates since Wednesday? The last that I had heard that they were looking at a different couple of sites in the county itself. But in the meantime, our hospitals, and I believe some of the urgent cares, are setting up screening sites out in their parking lots with the tents or the pods to do the pre-assessment before the individuals actually go into the clinics. But I know that we're still looking at the parking lot setup, where people would just drive through for the respiratory infections and be screened and assessed basically in a parking lot area. But Tim Link is our contact person working with a group on that right now.
So we may have a remote hospital site for overflow or transfer or categorization or something?
Correct, yep. Thank you. Nothing right now, but yes, we're looking into that.
Okay, any other questions for Patrice or Tom? Thank you both.
No, not this time.
Thank you, and keep up the good work, and we'll be talking to you probably over the weekend and for sure on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on the agenda, item number two, County Operations Response Plan. Item A is IPA Action Plan. That's the Identify Plan Act. And this is the three teams from the private sector, health, business, and community. And anybody who wants to update or comment on this, floor's open.
I would first just ask my colleagues, have any questions or any thoughts after absorbing it for a couple of days now?
I think the discussion from the other day was positive. I think we have, I believe, consensus to explore this and move on this. So I'm, I guess I would want to know who is going to be the point person on this? And how would we get the ball rolling? I don't know if there's staff, Dawn, is there any staff assigned to this at this point? Are we looking for consensus from the Board of Supervisors before we take off on this?
Well, I thought Supervisor Wickham indicated last week these teams were already meeting. So I had expected that we would see kind of like what the status is. Is there something that we're being asked to do? It is intended to run outside of, but under the umbrella of our emergency management folks. So I guess, you know, from my perspective, it is, if this is already underway, and Supervisor Wickham indicated it is, I guess it's kind of a report.
Well, maybe I'll clarify that. So if you're, we're under the assumption it's already underway, that might be a half statement. So my analogy was, if you look at community, I see that area, the teams that, you know, for example, we've funded and empowered the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, along with Resources Unite, since they're connected to our General Assistance Program. And so they have some communication, they are working with the young, the elderly, those in need, nonprofits. And there is kind of a system of private entities and nonprofit entities that are serving that community. You know, the healthcare system, I think from what you just heard, related to the government and related to connecting with some of those hospitals is also underway. But I wouldn't claim that it's done and it's a report. So I, there's no action, keep in mind, I have, we've got City Dubuque on here too, in emergency management. So, you know, I think it'd be, you know, start with the Board of Supervisors. We think the idea has concept, but I'd like to know if those agencies as well, meaning the EMS committee and the City of Dubuque are, what they feel or think about this structure. But, you know, it starts with our board, you know, because that's, you know, where I originate. And so that's what I'm looking for, understanding and dialogue back on.
Well, I think at the last meeting on Wednesday, we had input from, I know for sure from Tom Berger, and I believe from Patrice, that, you know, they're having another support mechanism is positives, you know, having these private sector teams to help with this battle. They were positive about that, and if, I assume they're both still on. If I'm incorrect, please correct me, but, so I think having, for example, business expertise maybe could help us with some of the issues that have been brought up and brought to our attention. We have some, you know, a team of experts that maybe could help address those type of issues proactively, so. As far as I'm concerned, we should be moving forward with this.
Sure. I don't know if that was a question, if Patrice or Tom were on. I would be interested in their comments or thoughts. Patrice or Tom, you copy? It might be, he's muted.
Tom's muted.
Who's our operator?
Okay, I'm just looking for my notes. Tom was going to actually report on this today, so I kind of turned it over to him.
He's trying to, he's unmuted.
Okay, thank you. And I'll look for my notes while he's.
Yeah, just for a minute.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, I look at this like any other disaster, like I said, Wednesday. If we get these groups that can assist us and kind of take some of the, some of the work with the business community away from the incident management team, that's only going to be helpful. I'm assuming it's going to be higher-level people, you know, CEOs and elected officials and kind of the heavy hitters in the communities that are going to be assisting with something like that. So I think it can only, you know, help the EOC and help the incident management team as we work through the problems that are, you know, right in front of us. And then, you know, I'm kind of excited about it, you know, just the problem is that I wouldn't, or we're busy enough now where we wouldn't have time to, you know, fill the people out. But I'm assuming that'd kind of come from the elected officials and, you know, whoever would be interested in that. That's kind of how I foresee it, you know, because it'd be a group of individuals that isn't going to be down doing the dirty work like we are, I guess.
You do the good work, Tom.
Would try.
Okay. Patrice, you, I assume you support Tom's feelings on this, if we can move forward with this?
Absolutely. We conversed, it was either yesterday or Wednesday night, so yes. And Tom was planning on reporting for both of us on that today. So, yep, thank you.
So are you looking for us, like, let's just take help? Are we, are we looking, Patrice and Tom, are you looking for us to do something with regard to supplies and home care and hospital care? I, my understanding was we really kind of wanted to leave that kind of be at the design of the response. What more could we do? What are you thinking?
Well, yeah, I think on that one, you know, we're kind of working through the supplies, but, you know, like you asked about the, and I don't know if I'm sure all the CEOs are extremely busy now, but if they could devote somebody from Mercy, Finley, Crescent, and all them facilities we talked about. So when you ask about the ventilators, maybe, you know, if we don't have that information or that's not at our fingertips, you know, that group could share that information or groups like that might have better information for supplies and stuff. But, I mean, we're working through our channels now. I guess the business one and the community are probably a little more, make a little more sense to me just for the fact of, you know, if you have somebody from the chamber and Rick Dickinson or whoever it is working on that. So if somebody calls us, want help through the SBA program and some of the programs that the federal government's going to have for small businesses, you know, you shoot that to their way and they kind of help them navigate that. It's kind of my thought with it. And community, you know, that'd be your...
Yep, that's, yep, that's the right, that was my vision as well, Tom. So I think if you're echoing that back, that, you know, if you needed one of those people in the business sector, Rick Dickinson would absolutely be that person.
Yeah, I think that would only be a help, help to the, it's going to get better service to the small businesses. It's going to help what we can do, what the business community can do to help everybody get back on their feet from this incident.
So if we look at community, I know that we've taken steps since we last met. Dawn Sherman has been in close contact with appropriate social distancing, of course, but in close contact with ECIA about the community block grant funds and pursuing a grant opportunity, looking to have something to submit early next week. So for community, the county is working on identifying opportunities for federal funding to help with meal delivery services, the expansion of that. Some of that's come from Representative Chuck Eisenhardt. So following up on those leads, I feel like we've taken a pretty good concrete step there. Mark Schneider's been activated at ECIA. We're going to have a presentation, I think, on Monday from Kelly and Dykmeier from that, from ECIA as well. So Dawn's going to have an update today. On the business section, I can report that I'm working with Shannon Lundgren, and we are looking at, working with Jackie Ray from the western or more rural part of the county looking at small business needs and workforce needs. It's not intended to be, obviously, exclusive, but I was invited to join forces there and certainly, you know, we'll be doing that in working with even our state representatives to see, you know, communication pieces. So I guess those would be my updates in terms of what we think the county is doing with regard to those, those two sectors in terms of new report to the board.
This is Dawn Sherman. I did meet with about six of the nonprofits that are doing food delivery. So we will be bringing that grant proposal to you on Monday. But I just wanted to say that this diagram really is helpful, and it brought to light in our discussion today is that we have programs available, but some of our citizens do not know how to access them. So that communication portion of this and getting it out to the public, we've identified through this grant process as well, and so we're going to be working on that. You know, some of our elderly do not have Facebook, and so we need to look at different avenues to get this information, that this assistance is available to them. So we will be working on that as well.
Okay, so I guess the only question I have from an organizational standpoint, I think we have a good outline here. Are we, do we need to have some specific outreach similar to how we would fill a board or commission? Are we?
Well, before, we've got the city's logo on it, and we've got the emergency management logo, which is a combination of all the small towns and the City of Dubuque. So my intent was to create unity, is that, you know, this would be kind of a structure that all would support. So that would be a question to my colleagues, is do you want to take those off and just have Dubuque County on it? Do you want to keep them all on and try to talk to those groups and say, do you support this concept? That's kind of the question I have for you.
I'm fine. I think it would be better if it was a multi-pronged group. But, you know, what kind of, I guess, who would take the lead on it? And what kind of timeframe? We're in a, you know, we're in a time now where a week seems like a year. So I guess, are we, do we have a plan for outreach to the city? And I'm okay being that person to contact the city. We talked to Tom Berger today, but his board is made up of folks from throughout the county. And so we'd have to see about what kind of outreach we need to do there. And then that's all complicated by the fact that we can't really do this in person. So I think we'd need Tom's input, and I can certainly get ahold of Mayor Buell about this plan and talk to him. I think we talked to him earlier today. I think we plan on talking over the weekend. I could certainly take the, you know, discussion and talk to Mayor Buell.
Well, part of the execution of this plan idea kind of goes to our next discussion as well in terms of whether we're going to actually hire services to help have a professional person helping us execute some of this. So I mean, I guess Supervisor Wick, I might ask you, you know, what are your thoughts? And what actions have you taken? What do you see as the next step?
I'm kind of a linear thinker, so if the city and EMS committees haven't kind of blasted, so to speak, like we're doing here with consensus, then either take their logos off or you go get their blessing.
All right, I'll check with the city over the weekend, have a report on Monday. And I'd ask... And I'd ask, uh, uh, Tom Berger, uh, to maybe assess, uh, the, uh, uh, emergen- emergency management, uh, uh, group of Dubuque County and, uh, let us know, uh, if this is a, you know, if, if it's a tripartite, uh, endeavor, or, uh, uh, strictly a Dubuque County initiative. That sound okay?
I'd, I'd support that.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, and Tom, you, is Tom still on? I see he's muted, okay. He's giving me the thumbs up, okay, he'll check with his folks then, so.
Yeah, I, I can, uh, I think Dave, that's something we can, uh, just, just check with the commission chair, and then as you get looking, we'll share the, I can email out the, the diagram, and there might be some mayors that would want to join forces and come in and help with it, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's that.
And Dave, you're on the, the board for.
Ooh, I lost Dan for a second there.
I, I was saying, can you hear me now, Dave?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I, I was suggesting that you're on the board at GDBC as our chair, and, um, maybe that would be an easy outreach to say, you know, how do they wish to fit into this? Uh, I, I imagine their questions are gonna be, what is it that you're talking about and, uh, you know, what is the, what's the vision?
Chair Baker, you're, I'm sorry. You, you're welcome to fulfill that request, but I talk to Rick Dickinson every day. We're, we're both in the same community, I work for small businesses and he, he's definitely in the loop, so I'd be happy to do that if you'd like. But, uh, it's your call.
Well, I think just for this, uh, uh, step between now and our meeting on Monday, uh, to, I think we need to determine if, uh, emergency management is on board, if the city of Dubuque is interested, um, and then I think from there, then we can determine our uh, plan of action, which probably would include, uh, you know, the Rick Dickinsons of the, uh,
Okay.
of Dubuque County, and, uh, the Jackie Rays and, uh, uh, Molly Grovers and, uh, uh, et cetera.
All right, goo- good point.
Well, something we might consider doing, um, to kind of just begin to effectuate this is look at joining the chambers of commerce of the communities that we have in our county. We should look at joining the Cascade Chamber of Commerce, officially joining the Dyersville Chamber of Commerce. And those would be ways to, you know, have outreach into the, those communities, and also as we look at economic issues, I think that's a, you know, as you look at the, who are the, uh, who are the Molly Grovers? Well, they're those chambers and we don't belong to those, as far as I know.
Uh, we do belong to the Dubuque Chamber.
I'd support that at another day, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd, I'd support that, it's just probably not high priority right now, but I would support it.
Okay, all right, uh, anything else on the Identify Plan Act IPA? Okay, um, we'll go next to item two B, a Board of Supervisor employment discussion. I think, Dawn, do you have a report?
Yes, so I had shared with you an updated job description, um, and in the meantime, um, ECIA has made a proposal, um, to us, um, about doing a contract service with them. Um, in that proposal, they would have a dedicated employee, um, to the board and to the county, in county staff, fitting that role, um, and then also being able to access, have access, or continued access to their other resources within that, um, organization as well. So I was able to speak with Kelly briefly yesterday, um, after our other meeting. Um, and I would, um, very much support, uh, exploring this option as we, um, then maybe move into, uh, a more in-depth recruitment if we want to make this a, a permanent internal position. So this, her proposal to us, or ECIA's proposal to us, gives us a little bit of time to maybe give this a test run, see if this is the right thing that, um, that we need or you as the board need. And if so, then it'll give us time to continue to execute your mission during this, this COVID crisis, but then give us time to do, uh, a full in-depth, um, recruitment to, to select the, the right person, the right fit. So I would be supportive of, of that recommendation. Um, either way, I think we could move quickly on, on getting somebody assigned, um, to these responsibilities.
Okay, and so, Dawn, on Monday, would you believe there'll be additional information?
Yes, we can, um, we can have, um, Kelly, the director, she will be here for the, the black, the block grant discussion. Um, so we can also have that discussion, um, maybe for her to provide a little bit more detail than, um, the document that she provided yesterday.
Okay, and, uh, I just, and again, this, uh, um, I am interested in, um, in, in listening to this as a, um, addition, uh, potential addition to the team during emergency, uh, uh, this time of emergency, but, uh, still think that, uh, uh, before we do anything permanently, um, we really need to take a hard look at, uh, uh, at adding positions. But, uh, uh, if, if there's value, uh, during this, uh, time, which, which truly is an emergency, uh, I certainly have an open mind. Now, if, uh, Supervisors Wickham or McDonough have any comments, it sounds like Monday we'll have, uh, some additional information. Okay.
For Dawn, some other job description information. And, um, when the ECIA opportunity came up, we did not proceed with job description changes. Um, there are other models out there, I made some calls to other counties and other administrators to see also what they do. And, um, so I'd like to explore the option of ECIA because it allows us to move quickly without suspending any kind of normal HR recruitment or, um, consideration, it allows us to purchase professional services from one key individual with the access to the range of services that they offer. And so I'd like to pursue that, I think it's worth hearing, um, from Kelly, and also we don't have any budget numbers, we just have kind of her initial thoughts, um, in response to just some brainstorming. But I, I welcome their input.
I am, uh, less interested in ECIA's proposal, um, I'm more of a command and control guy that's from the private sector, that tends to to work well when you recognize and identify talent that can help your team and you're in a time of crisis. Uh, that's a rare opportunity, and so, uh, I, I'm not in favor necessarily of ECIA's proposal. Um, I would be in favor of, uh, of the previous conversations with the candidate.
Okay, and I, uh, I think just, uh, uh, I would want to actually see um, the proposals, uh, from ECIA and, uh, Dawn's recommendation on the, uh, um, the, uh, uh, direct hire, uh, so I think we should look at the information provided from Dawn for both of those. And again, uh, you all know my feeling is if we do this, uh, during this time of emergency, I would want it to be shorter term, and then we can decide, uh, where it goes, uh, uh, from there. But I would be interested in looking at both proposals, um, and, uh, and, and, uh, hearing from, uh, Dawn in regard to her recommendation.
I will have both of those ready for Monday.
Thank you.
Until you before then.
All right.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, um, we have item C, um, under, uh, agenda item two would be courthouse entry and the counts, uh, we do have, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, rear door and front door numbers, the rear door obviously are, uh, people who work in the, uh, building. They have, uh, backdoor, um, access, uh, and it looks like our counts are down, um, considerably, uh.
So just to put some context to this, um, at our meeting on Wednesday, there was some discussion of the, the potential of closing, um, the courthouse to employ, so, um, we were asked to, um, compile the, the entrance data, and so, um, Deputy Backstead, um, along with the help of IT, were able to pull this together. So if there's no further discussion on closing the courthouse, this would just be for informational purposes only.
Okay, so I think for today.
Well, the, I believe the federal building's closed, is that right? I think the federal building's closed, I think the city hall is closed.
City hall's closed, uh, I believe they had a positive case and they're closed for cleaning, deep cleaning. Uh, and I did not hear exactly when they plan on reopening. Um, uh, to my knowledge, we don't have, um, a positive case, I think if we.
I mean, we're gonna wait, wait to have a positive.
I.
Um, you know, I think we got over a hundred people coming in, so I guess if the board's comfortable with a hundred people entering the courthouse, that's where we're at, I'm less comfortable with that, so I'd like to drive that number down and, uh, not wait till we have a positive here to close the courthouse and clean it.
It looks like the number of people is generally on the decline, I mean, I see that as a, you know, a general trend um, for, you know, the rear door access, we're getting better with folks.
Front doors on increase. So the front door vestibule is actually two up, so I don't, I, I hate to argue with it, but it's just in front of me.
Well, I'm not, I'm looking at the rear door access, I'm looking first at our own employees who would be most likely to be impacted if we have a positive inside the building, right? So continuing to support directors to be making those decisions to let, um, folks work at home and support that. Um, I note that Supervisor Wickham's at home today or at his office today. So I think that's a positive, um, you, you know, as we look at who's entering the courthouse, we have to remain open, that is my opinion, we have to have some limited access to the courthouse. Actually Chuck Eisenhardt is making sure that folks know the city did not have a positive case. Um, he wants us to be, um, just to know that that's not, um, he did not, the, according to the newspaper, there's not a positive case there.
All right, then I stand corrected, uh, uh, but they are closed for deep cleaning.
For cleaning.
Had that, uh, conversation this morning, so.
Yep. You know, maybe we should be looking at, Dawn, maybe we need an update from facilities. Did we, are we, you know, I think the, the, the doorknobs and, uh, elevator controls, those are gonna be the obvious points of, um, top contagion, are we frequently cleaning those? I don't even know what that.
Yes, we are.
What that possibly.
We, we've hired a forty hour week temp employee whose sole responsibility is to wipe down those high-touch areas throughout the, the courthouse, so he has already started him in doing that.
Is it possible to put some kind of a stand outside of the, the, the elevator? So that, um, you know, that people have the ability to use sanitizer when they leave the elevator, or, you know, that there's a, a way to get clean or use, uh, some kind of, um, paper towel or something with the disinfectant on it when they choose to touch the buttons for elevator access?
I, I will check, I know on our floor, there is a, a sanitizer dispenser right outside the elevator, which is there all the time. I believe it's on every floor, I will check, if not, we will get that resource there.
Maybe we need a big arrow. So, um, hearing from our staff by chat that there's hand sanitizer on first and fourth for sure.
Sounds like it's not a problem.
Yeah, Shane says he thinks it's on every, on, outside the elevators on all floors.
So it's already there?
Sweet.
And a table would be possibly in the way, the, I, I assume these are mounted, uh, on the wall, yeah. Similar to at nursing homes and hospitals, okay.
Right, and then I, for purposes of people who can't see the, the visual aid, the number, front door access, the number of individuals who actually entered the courthouse and security checkpoint. Um, on Wednesday, there were five individuals, and Thursday, there were six. I'm not sure, Shane wants to actually walk us through this with that, with, how one verse is different than the other. Um, CJ May's reporting he's had sanitizer install, installed inside his office.
Okay, yeah, Nathan's.
Shane, you're unmuted if you want to give a report.
Nathan Gilmore is also reporting that, uh, they've had them, uh, uh, for quite some time over in their building.
Yeah, I think real quick, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Real quick on the sanitizers, I think, uh, since this has kind of come about, I think maintenance has probably doubled, if not maybe tripled the amount of hand sanitizer stations throughout the building, there are multiple on every floor, uh, including right outside the elevator. Uh, as far as the numbers, yeah, the rear door access, those are all employees or other people that have access, card access to the building that have come in. Uh, obviously they've come down a little bit, I can't say whether that's due to department heads having less staff in the building, I'm not really sure, I know I sent out just to the board, uh, I'd had, uh, the counts of everyone that actually did come in. Uh, I didn't really look at who was staff from individual departments. The actual front door access, yeah, that first number, the higher number, those are just strictly people coming in the building. They come in the front door, for whatever reason, thinking we're open. Some may turn right back around, others talk with security, others make phone calls. Uh, the second number is someone that apparently was deemed necessitant, where they had some need, that, uh, a department head or someone from their uh, department came down, uh, physically met with them at the, the security checkpoint, at the door, through the door, uh, or exchanged some paperwork, uh, through or under the door. And then the bottom number, yeah, that is actual people that were deemed necessary to come in through the building, uh, that would include our media, anybody for a court hearing, uh, attorneys for, uh, inmates that are appearing via the video system. Uh, these numbers have slowly, the, the, as far as the people we've been allowing in have been going down, I would say, over the last week. Uh, I can say usually as far as a court procedure, I know everything has been significantly lessened. Uh, but the early portion of the week is always significantly busier than the end of the week. Uh, that's kind of just a consistent trend all the time, I don't know if that affects these numbers at all, but.
Okay, and from the, uh, before we did this, when we had our initial discussion on this, you know, we were talking about hun- hundreds a day and potentially thousands, uh, just in the treasurer's office, and we certainly have flattened that curve, I would say, quite a bit. Um, so I think, uh, this is positive, um, and, uh, uh, you know, I think we can, uh, you know, work, work from here, and I think maybe as word gets out that, uh, you know, it's, uh, not business as usual here, those numbers may even come down, and I think the employee counts, um, are, um, it's, looks like it's down about sixty percent, cause I think we have about a hundred people normally. And, uh, uh, it looks like we're down in the forties and fifties, so, uh, uh, I think that's, that, that's good, and I, you know, that shows there's some, uh, positions that need to be here. But, uh, again, I think we've reduced that number substantially, so.
Just real quick to answer CJ's comment, he had said that those numbers may be off to people coming in and out. Uh, the paperwork that was actually forwarded that came with this data, there's actually probably about two hundred card swipes coming in and out of the building each day, so those are actual bodies. That was based on the actual people that they may have come in six or seven times throughout the day, but it was those numbers are the actual people that came in that day.
So they're not duplicated. I also just would, would point out, we did expect that, um, we're hoping that citizens can still pay their property taxes. Um, e- e- even though the delinquency's been kind of suspended, but, so the numbers, we expected there to be uptick. In a normal time, we'd have hundreds of people here trying to pay property taxes, at this time, we would expect there to be long lines, so. I do think, um, generally people are, I'm pleased people are staying away and only, um, coming to us when they have essential need. So I, see, thank you, it, it is very helpful, Shane, for you to lay it out like this, um, for us to actually see it, it's not just general discussion, but we actually have a little bit of information to support it.
And, and if that's something they want me to continue, I can certainly, we can continue downstairs trying to get numbers, uh, as we track people that come in and out. trying to get numbers as we track people that come in and out of the building.
Shane, I think perhaps a weekly report would be helpful. I don't think you need to do, you know, I, I don't think you need to do that every day for us. But we'll be meeting Monday and Wednesday for sure of next week. If you can get us another report on Wednesday, I think that would be sufficient.
Certainly, I can look to do this next Wednesday again then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Shane on the courthouse entry counts? All right, any other business?
Well, I had a, I did have a question come in. And, and this goes to back, I guess, just to go back to our staff person and who might be either through purchase services or a hire. Do we have some kind of idea about what cost is? Are we going to let that ride until we see that we get a proposal back? But that is a comment that came in in an email to me. What are we looking for, for our budget number? I responded, I said I thought it would be under $100,000 and that would include all benefit packages.
I would concur with that. That's, that's what I anticipate, a hire, an internal hire with benefits to be approximately that, with full pay and, and benefits.
And then that number, if we're talking about getting somebody in, that would be a much smaller number for this fiscal year because we're quite a ways, I mean, we don't have that much, so it would be prorated.
Correct, yes.
And then we have not had, number one, we haven't decided if we're going to do this. Number two, we haven't decided about the timeframe. So that would all be things, I think, once we see the proposals, decide if we're going to do something, and then we can, you know, pin down the budget costs.
I also, to my colleagues while we're meeting, I did, I do have my weekly report from May Hinson from the region. Would you want me to send that to Dawn, to send off to you both? Would you like to see those weekly reports? Do you have interest in that or, or not?
I would love that, Anne, because I, all my weekend meetings are canceled. So I, that'll give me something to look at over the weekend. And then we can, if we want, if there's something in there, possibly put it on for Monday's agenda.
Okay, well, I haven't, it's come to me since we've been together. So I'm sending it to Dawn and she can get it out to folks and have a copy for whomever might want that as well.
And I, I think it might be good to have a, a, a brain health or mental health update. And if we can get Jody and May back on and, and see if, you know, if, if they have any statistics from the Iowa helpline or whatever other lines, helplines that are open, maybe they, you know, if, whether we're getting an uptick or not. Oh, May's on?
Well, did you?
If May can.
We, we also did get, we got some changes to the website. Have, have my colleagues seen those? We've moved the helplines up front and center. So there's easier access to information for people who go to the, to the Dubuque County website for that information.
Great.
I see May has indicated she's, she's here. And May, you can talk, you're unmuted. We, we'll be meeting Mon, Monday, are we meeting at 10:00 AM Monday? 10:00 AM? Is there possibility of some kind of an update from the region?
Hi, Dave. Hi, Dave. I have a community meeting with my coordinators via, via Zoom Monday morning from 9:30 until about noon. I could probably send some stuff ahead of time if you wanted. I know we are seeing an uptick in calls, for example, to the Iowa helpline and Your Life Iowa. It's been, it's been about five days since I've had those numbers, those updated numbers. But I could request them and hopefully have them by Monday morning.
Okay, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Or, May, probably Jody could get those for us too. I mean, you're going to be preparing for that meeting. Maybe Jody could, could get updated numbers. She's going to be calling probably the same folks you are. But in, in the monthly, when you start to see the weekly updates, I think you'll see that a lot of the questions get answered just with May's weekly update.
Yes, but I'll send an email, Anne, to Foundation too, because they're the ones who, who will be able to provide me with those numbers. And I'll CC Jody. So when they reply, Jody will have it too.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, man.
Maybe you can send that on to us. Yeah, and maybe you can send that on to us, Jody, when you get it. I know you're muted right now, but you're with us. When you get that, that email, if it doesn't come to Dawn or to Supervisors, if you could just forward that on, that would be helpful.
Okay. Anything else for today? Thank you all.
No, not for me.
And retain a motion to recess until Monday at 10:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to recess till Monday at 10:00 AM. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Carry three zero, we are in recess.
Thank you, everyone. Goodbye.